Okay, I will, it's two o'clock, so I will call the June 20th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. And I will begin with a land acknowledgement that the city of Fort Saskatchewan is located within Treaty VI territory and Métis Nation of Alberta Region IV. The ancestral and traditional territory of the Ni'ohwak, Denai, Blackfoot, Salto, Nakota Sioux, and Métis. And we acknowledge the many First Nations Métis and Inuit whose footsteps have marked these lands for generations. It is because of our treaty relationship that we can live, work, and play on Treaty VI territory. Okay, so we will begin with an approval of the May 16th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Minutes. Councilor Abbottoye.
I'll make a motion that we approve the May 16th Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented and circulated.
Thank you. Are there any errors or omissions? Not seeing any, I will close the motion. Please cast your vote. Not coming up.
It's just a little bit of a software delay. It should come up any second now.
Okay. There it is. Okay. And that is carried. Thank you very much. Now, at this point in time in the meetings, Now, at this point in time in the meetings, if there's anybody who wishes to come and speak to any of the items that are on the agenda, this would be your opportunity to do so. If you are, please stand and you can come up to the front and have five minutes. Going, going, nope, nobody's coming down for a delegation. All right, and nobody is registered. All right. So we will begin our presentation with Heritage River Concept Plan. And we have Kyle Shoal, Planning Technician, and Jordan Ruge, Planning and Development Manager for Smoky Lake County. So please, yeah. So welcome. And I have about fifteen minutes set up for you to present. And then if there's any questions after, then council has the opportunity to ask you questions.
Good afternoon, your worship, and members of council. My name is Mandy Chan. I'm a planner with the city. This afternoon, I am here to introduce Kyle Shoal from Smoky Lake County to provide a status update to the North Saskatchewan River Heritage River Initiative project. With that, I would like to invite Kyle to come over and present the project's update.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mandy. Hello, council. It's lovely to meet you in person. It's an honor. I have been before you a few times before, but only virtually, so it's lovely to join you in person, and I'm glad that we're able to do so today. I will try to keep my, I'll try to err on the side of saying less is saying more and keep my comments concise so that I can answer as many questions as possible. And really, this is an opportunity to hear from you and receive your input while this draft concept plan is still in draft form and we can continue to be making changes to it over the next few weeks and months. So I will try to remember to advance my own slides as well. Just to begin, there are a couple of acknowledgements that are worth making. Certainly, there are several groups which deserve special acknowledgement right from the outset, not the least of which include the Indigenous communities we've been engaging with and learning from, as well the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance, Alberta Environment and Protected Areas, Parks Canada, and our project team, which is being led, of course, by O2 Planning and Design. There's been, the report on the right, I should say, is the current draft cover page of the concept plan, and there have been a lot of hands having a role in shaping it to get it to this point. As I mentioned, that includes some of the groups that I was just mentioning, as well as Pipiqon, Piteqon, Associated Engineering, Expedition Tourism, Kerwood, Lydell, and No History. And of course, having the city of Fort Saskatchewan's input in the, in the form of Ms. Chan has been incredibly helpful as well and helped us to have a city of Fort Saskatchewan perspective on this work as well. The, the purpose of the report is twofold. Firstly, it's to obtain national recognition for each reach of the river, from where it leaves Banff National Park to the provincial border with the province of Saskatchewan, and see it formally designated as a Canadian Heritage River. Secondly, to function as an implementation blueprint, to have a visionary concept for the long-term management and heritage stewardship of this cultural landscape. Finally, and thirdly, sustainable recreation and tourism growth. So this is also with a mind and a lens to economic development and community wellness as well. As mentioned, the, the segment of river that we're talking about is seven hundred and eighteen kilometers, several of which flows right past the bank here at Fort Saskatchewan. This is part of Canada's second-longest river system in the Nelson Saskatchewan, and it has, as we illuminated during the nomination work last year, many outstanding heritage values. The project has been years, decades, centuries underway, most recently which Smoky Lake County took up the work in about 2019, which had already commenced at the hands of others and were now very nearly to the, to the next milestone, I should say. Last fall, the governments of Alberta and Canada accepted the formal nomination that Smoky Lake County had put forward on behalf of our partner communities and announced that we could proceed into this next phase of work. To do so, we retained a number of those groups that I was just referring to and engaged meaningfully with, with many different community groups, civic society, and municipalities to gather the information that's informed the document that's before you today. In terms of Indigenous engagement, we have focused on a visiting way and we connected with, or sought to connect with more than forty nations across Alberta and Western Canada. That work could and should and must continue beyond the horizon of this document, and that's the nature of relationship, is to begin where we are and to, to walk together. In terms of public engagements, we had a number of meetings, we had a number of workbooks and surveys that were completed, and all of that information has been accumulated to our, to our product. Finally, also a lens of tourism, as I mentioned, led by Expedition Consulting, and this is really also a key pillar to the work as well. I will try to not dwell too, too much on some of these slides, but just to say that there are many stories along the river that I think we do a variable job of, of making space for and ensuring that there's adequate opportunity for people to learn about the environment that we depend on. And so you see a few bullet points here, some of which will be fairly familiar and others which I think we can do a better job of telling how this river has sustained industry and economic development across Alberta as well. Also, on the, on the scope of recreational and natural heritage, lots of opportunity to not just educate residents across Alberta, but also visitors to this land as well. I want to linger more so, for example, on this slide, because it sets out a few key items in terms of where we aim to go, what's next, and how we aim to get there. So importantly, and you'll have heard this before, council, that this concept plan is non-statutory, which means that none of the land use decision-making processes that you experience today would change after designation. However, the intention is that there is an enduring spirit of collaboration among partners, and I mentioned that we have seventeen of those from Clearwater County to Vermilion River, east to west. And in undertaking those collaborations, there are a number of key actions and objectives that our work have identified as being worthwhile. What's on these slides is not comprehensive and is found within the document itself that will be implemented by the partners over the short, medium, and long term. And certainly, that will move more quickly or less quickly, depending on capacity and resourcing. And so certainly, different partners like Explore Edmonton, Travel Alberta, Travel Lakeland are going to be more seized of the recreation and tourism goals than, for example, the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance, which is primarily a water quality monitoring group, and, and you should be, I believe, fairly familiar with them as well. I think we may actually also be joined electronically today by Scott Miller, the Executive Director for Watershed Alliance, and I also sit on the board for Watershed Alliance, too. And so perhaps I'll see one or more of you at their AGM happening next Wednesday at Ski Valley on the south side of Edmonton as well. Okay. So this is a fairly, I want to say grassroots and diverse group of partners that have come together over the last several years since 2019 to get us to this point and which will continue to work together moving forward. You see here kind of just a graphic that aims to provide a bit of a concept, and, and you'll note that, you know, most closely touching the river is the province of Alberta and Parks Canada, the federal government, which have their own jurisdictional role along with municipalities in advancing each of the focus areas under this project. Annually and every ten years, there are monitoring reports that the, my words are failing me, forgive me, that the advisory committee will work together to populate and to collaborate on in targeting granting opportunities and the like to undertake projects within each of our communities as well. I'll just get caught up with myself here. So in terms of implementation, which is where we've kind of arrived at, we all, as Albertans, do have a role to play in, in river storytelling and river culture. As a recovering West Coast kayak guide, my perspective is, is informed by my experience on the West Coast, but also as a, as a child of a farming family in Westlock County as well. And, and I think that the, the best opportunity to improve stewardship is to improve individual decision-making as opposed to leaning too heavily towards an enforcement perspective. An education perspective goes a long way in, in helping us be better stewards. I wanted to reiterate that the designation complements stewardship at all other levels of government, including individuals, grassroots, industry, municipal, provincial, and Indigenous communities as well. And what we act, what, what actions I would implore council to consider, will we take, will you take, will this organization take to experience, conserve, or restore the heritage of, of this fantastical heritage river? This is very stressful in person. I apologize. I'm trying to remain put together here. So in terms of next steps, we, we do have this draft concept plan. It's our intention to return to our partner councils as we committed to under the Alberta Community Partnership Grant, and certainly, City of Fort Saskatchewan was one of the partners that provided us a letter of support which assisted in getting us that grant. So we're doing so, and this is an opportunity for you to ask tough questions, to make suggestions of refinements that you'd like to see. Perhaps you're aware of city projects that you would like to see celebrated or commemorated within the document so that we can talk about that with our partners at Parks Canada, Alberta Parks, et cetera. It's our intention to finalize this document so that it can be transmitted to the Heritage Rivers Board this fall, this September, and then seek ministerial endorsement early next spring. With that, I would be more than happy to entertain those questions, and I hope that that's helpful and informative, and I apologize for my rambliness.
Great, thank you very much. And maybe just take it back to the map or something, just so that you've still got it on, have your presentation on in case there's questions. Take it just back to the map. Yeah, there you go. Okay. Questions, Counselor Kelly?
Thank you. Kyle, I thought you did a great job, so, so relax, man, you're doing well. My question revolves around, I got two questions, really. Let me ask maybe this, what I think might be the easiest one first. You reference on page, I think it's seventeen of your document, under key actions. I, the last line is upgrade the wastewater treatment systems at Gold Bar. I was going to ask you on the progress, if any, of that, and why you consider that important, and then ask you concurrent with that, if there's any issues that you've observed or that you're aware of, from the wastewater treatment plant that's just off Highway Twenty One on the east side of the river, so.
That, that's your easy question?
That's my easy question.
Through the chair, and I, I apologize, I appreciate the question, counselor, through the chair. So one of the partners we certainly engaged through this work was the Alberta Capital Wastewater Treatment Group, and so certainly, they had indicated to us their, their plans for capital upgrades and work and the like. And I'm personally aware of, of ongoing dialogue that the city of Fort Saskatchewan is having about your, your water future. I'm not prepared to speak specifically through your worship in terms of any issues that I'm aware of, because I'm, I'm not personally.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm aware, though, that that work is ongoing and would continue to be ongoing.
And Gold Bar, because you reference it specifically in your, in your report?
I'd be happy to take that away and return to you, counselor, through the chair, in terms of how the project team interacted with, with Epcore and capital wastewater in terms of those capital projects. Again, that was information that was provided to us, so I'm not sure that there was much more depth into it than that, if, if I may.
Okay, fair enough. I, I don't need you to get back to me. I was hoping you could tell me that the work is done and, and the plant is up to speed. May I ask one more question?
Okay.
Thank you. Kyle, I looked at the actions, and I appreciate each and every one of them, but in your mind, in your words, the two, one or two largest advantages going forward for implementing the plan you're proposing?
Through your worship and to the counselor, under this project, Smoky Lake County has been engaged, engaging with groups that we otherwise never would have had the opportunity to engage with. And so that is, of course, begins with Indigenous communities, but also other initiatives like the River Valley Alliance, the Edmonton National Urban Park, more information about which I'm understanding is shortly forthcoming. And we see this initiative as an opportunity to latch on to projects and make them bigger and make them better, and collaborate to have canoe route from Enok Cree Nation to Métis Crossing, for example, and create the awareness and communication products together that individually we couldn't possibly hope to accomplish due to capacity and resourcing limitations. So, so far under this project, which is going to take on a lifetime of its own beyond my time with Smoky Lake County, I think, we've already been experiencing opportunities to participate in a constellation of grant applications, for example, that we otherwise would never have been able to be aware of or participate in. And so by, by the fact that we have three orders of government, as well as Indigenous communities and self-governing communities, talking to one another and building relationships where previously there have been none, is very, very exciting. I think the province has indicated a vision, a bold vision to grow tourism in this region. The northeast of Edmonton is, is low-hanging fruit for lots of advancement in that space, and that's kind of where this project began as a, as a tourism initiative, and I'm most excited to see where it goes there.
Perfect, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Macon.
Thanks for your presentation today. My question was going to be, and I think you partly answered it, does the designation limit in any way new activity on the river? And you said in there that, that it wouldn't, but I just wanted to confirm that that wasn't based on like grandfathering work that's allowed now, and that new work would have some sort of, now I'm losing my words, pardon me, limitation, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor, and through the chair. That's an excellent question. I'm happy to address it head-on because the support of this initiative has not been unanimous across Alberta. You will be receiving a letter from Brazzo County, for example, in opposition to this project, based on those concerns. And we've been very clear with all of our partners that this initiative is non-legislative. It has no effect whatsoever in any way on land use decision-making into the future. In some ways, the engagement we're undertaking here is in fact helpful to future economic development because we're gathering knowledge and we're gathering consensus today rather than waiting for tomorrow. And, and so I had a CAO, a former CAO, a late former CAO, who always talked about how the most, the best time to have planted a tree is yesterday, and the next best time is today. And so that's how I view this project. I think that's how the seventeen partner municipalities who have been assisting us in this work view this project. We've certainly engaged with industry and utility, and this includes, of course, the industrial heartland that I'm thinking of, in obtaining those views and acknowledging that economic development can't not exist in the river environment. In fact, in many ways, economic development in the river environment isn't itself a heritage value in the future that we deserve and should be talking about. So that, I'm making this more complicated than it needs to be, but the short answer is no.
Yeah. All right, well, I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So it looks like all the questions. I'm just going to thank you very much for coming out and providing an update, and I think when you're out talking to some of these places that maybe are having some opposition, you should reference them to the River Valley Associate, or River Valley Alliance, how, you know, how seven, or I guess it's six now, municipalities have said, we want to create this beautiful urban park. Well, that's for, I believe it's eighty-some kilometers, so I can imagine if you had seven hundred and eighteen kilometers. So I can imagine if you had 718 kilometers, that we could call that as a very big park. That would be just tremendous. So keep up the good work, keep us posted, and we look forward to hearing about projects and outcomes. So thank you very much for joining us. And you're welcome to stay, and you're absolutely welcome to leave as well. We have a drive ahead of you.
Thank you, your worship. I look forward to seeing perhaps some of you at the ribbon cutting for the new footbridge here very shortly as well.
When is that again? Do you have the date?
Next year.
Oh, next year. Okay. Get it in our calendars early. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay. Just give them a second. The next item that we have is downtown development initiatives. Erin Brush Duncan, welcome.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm Erin Brush Duncan, the city's acting director of economic development, and I appreciate you having me here today.
Andrew's first real day on the job today, and he's getting all the technical.
I guess just click.
Okay. We learn as we go. All right. The purpose of me being here today is to provide counsel with an update on the progress and the impact of the downtown development incentives. So just to kind of go through a background and timeline of this process and these programs. So on January 26, 2021, council adopted our Fort Our Future, the City of Fort Saskatchewan's municipal development plan. And in the MDP states that in recent years, the downtown has experienced stagnation with limited new investment and development. It continues stating that supporting the existing businesses in the downtown and creating a vibrant downtown experience requires a greater population base in and around the downtown area in addition to needing a unique variety of commercial and social activities. On July 6, 2021, council adopted the Downtown Action Plan, which included a recommendation to establish development incentives to encourage development and redevelopment. Additional residential development within the downtown will increase support for existing and future commercial services. On August 24, 2021, council passed a resolution directing administration to report on tax incentive options for affordable housing and downtown redevelopment. On December 14, 2021, an information report was presented to council regarding the implementation of incentives to encourage development, redevelopment, and affordable housing within the downtown area. Two separate incentive programs were presented, the brownfield tax incentives and the downtown development grants. On April 12 of 2022, council gave the first reading to Bylaw C1522, which is the brownfield tax exemptions and the downtown development grant policy, FIN-15-C. During the brownfield tax exemption discussion, wording for potential amendments was discussed, and one of those amendments established a requirement for an annual review of the brownfield tax exemption bylaw. The amendment was incorporated into the brownfield tax exemption bylaw prior to final readings, and this is why we're here today. On May 24, 2022, council approved the brownfield tax exemption bylaw and the downtown development grant policy, and also amended the financial reserves policy to establish a funding source for the downtown development grant program and allocated $500,000 from the Financial Stabilization Reserve to the Economic Development Reserve. The intent of these incentives is to encourage the development and creation of a variety of housing types and increase residential density in our downtown. The brownfield tax exemption and the downtown development grant encourage multi-unit residential development and redevelopment within the downtown. For both incentive programs, projects must be located within the downtown. The brownfield program is restricted to specific sites, whereas the development grant is open to areas in the downtown that are not eligible for that brownfield program. Projects must be new construction of multi-unit residential or mixed use with the total square footage being a minimum of 50% residential. Must be in adherence with all applicable development regulations and guidelines, at least two stories, and create a minimum of three new residential units above ground floor commercial use or six new residential units. Eligible projects can receive a downtown development grant or a tax, a brownfield tax incentive, kind of based on their location, but not both. Just to go over the basics real quick, the brownfield tax exemption program provides a 100% exemption of the municipal portion of property taxes on new multiple unit and mixed use residential developments up to a value of 5% of those eligible capital costs. And brownfield sites are defined as properties that are or could possibly be contaminated, vacant, derelict, or underutilized, and are suitable for development. Here you can see our brownfield sites map. There are about 10 locations, and these are the ones that have been identified as eligible for the brownfield tax exemption program. Our downtown development incentives provides a cash-based grants equivalent to 3% of the eligible capital cost to create that mixed use or multi-unit residential development. I think it's important for us to emphasize that these grants are paid out only when that project is complete. And here you can see our downtown development incentives map. These are the areas that the properties within here, if they are not eligible for the brownfield program, they would be eligible for the downtown development incentive. So just to kind of go over a bit of this program, the brownfield tax exemption bylaw has been available to potential investors since May of 2022 and is due for its annual review. Although an annual review is not currently required for the downtown development grant policy, administration has opted to include a review of both programs as the two are intended to be complementary. The programs were officially launched and made available to potential investors in May of 2022, and administration shared information about the programs through a news release on June 10 of 2022. The programs have been promoted on city websites, both the fortsasque.ca website and investfortssasque.ca, social media through e-newsletters. And then we're also working one-on-one with multiple property owners and potential investors when a potentially eligible project is identified. For the good stuff. So here's kind of our summary analysis of the interest in these programs. So to date, economic development has received eight serious inquiries into the two programs. Eligible projects cannot apply for a brownfield tax exemption or the downtown development grant until a development permit is issued. The potential projects are in various phases of development, but until last week, none had received their development permit approval, and no funds have been withdrawn from the incentive fund. I've just learned that one of the potential projects has now have, I guess it now has an approved development permit, and I'll be reaching out and working with them regarding applying for the brownfield tax exemption program. Interest in the program has been evenly divided between the brownfield and the development grant. Most inquiries that we've received are discovered through discussions with economic development or with planning and development, who's also very aware of the program, as well as information provided by realtors and property owners. Feedback to date has been positive. Many people who are interested in the program are also commenting on the other investments that the city has made into the downtown, such as the parklets, the murals, the programming. These investments are perceived as benefiting new potential investments. Some of the interested parties have also commented that they anticipate housing needs to grow with potential industrial projects that are proposed within Fort Saskatchewan. Encouraging the infill residential and mixed use development in the downtown is becoming a priority for many Alberta municipalities. When these two programs were initially proposed, economic development did a review of similar programs across the province. And since the Fort Saskatchewan downtown incentive programs were introduced last May, the cities of Edry, Calgary, Edmonton, Spruce Grove, and St. Albert have all introduced new downtown incentive programs. Not all necessarily for residential development, but have all introduced new incentives to promote development in their downtowns. When we start talking about the program impacts of both the brownfield and the downtown development programs, providing a variety of housing densities and types helps to create diverse, equitable, and sustainable communities. Multi-unit residential housing is often a more affordable and financially accessible housing option compared to single detached homes. Providing this type of housing in a desirable area close to amenities and public transportation is one way to help meet a diversity of housing needs in the community. Implementation of the downtown development grant and the brownfield tax incentives helps the city work towards achieving one of the primary goals of the downtown action plan, which is increasing private sector investment. We do have a few next steps. So both of these programs are in the early adoption phases. Feedback has been really favorable, and interest has been received for a variety of different projects from different developers. This is not just one developer interested in a bunch of different projects. We're hearing from multiple different developers on these multiple different sites. Administration will continue to promote the programs and solicit feedback from potential investors. With multiple projects and developers showing interest in the programs, administration is recommending to continue the programs without major changes. However, two minor corrections are recommended following this first year of implementation. The first one would be to increase the program boundary slightly for the downtown development incentive. There's a large residential lot that is suitable for infill development that's not currently within the program boundary. It's just about one block outside. And so to increase the marketability and developability of this lot, administration's recommending that the program boundary for the downtown development grant be amended to include this high potential lot. The second thing that we'd like to consider is requiring an annual report for both programs. Currently, an annual report is required for the brownfield tax exemption program, but is not required for that downtown development grant. And administration is recommending that the policy be amended so that the annual review is required for both programs. These amendments will be presented for council consideration at a future regular council meeting. And I'm available for questions.
Great. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'll open it up to clarifying questions. I can actually kick it off if everybody wants. So on your first slide, you said the brownfield is 100% exempt at 5%. What you missed on there was the timeframe of how long they receive the exemption.
I think it's for a period of up to 15 years.
Okay. It's always very important to have that information when we're presenting this because, of course, then people think, oh, I can get forever unlimited.
Absolutely.
The other one that I have is on the downtown incentives because it's actually providing funds to private sectors. And I guess I question, so as we're providing funds to these people who own the buildings and are doing upgrades and things like that in the downtown core, is there any way that there can be something within it that they get the money to do an upgrade, but then they jack up their rents, and then they can't, and then nobody's going to go there anyways? So, you know, how do we deal with that? Because I guess, you know, it's frustrating if we give them money and then they use it to their advantage, which is good, but then they jack up their rents.
Thank you for your question, mayor. I think that is something that I would like to take back and consider. I think that bringing an increased housing density into the downtown, which is, you know, what this program was designed to do, would benefit the businesses that are in the area. But regarding the rental rates is something I'd have to take back and consider.
So it's not so much the brownfield that I'm talking about. I'm talking about the downtown incentive one for the businesses? The grant?
So the downtown development incentive, that is also a residential program. So it would be bringing in mixed use or multi-unit housing in the downtown with a, through a grant program.
Okay. My error on that. I apologize for that. Okay. All right. Counselor Macon?
I was just wondering if you can show us the area you wanted considered to be added to that map? Can you bring up the map?
Sure. Through your worship to Counselor Macon, this is something that we would be bringing forward at a, I think, a regular council meeting to show that increase in area and why we would be doing it. But it's just about one block outside of the existing incentives program.
Janelle, can you just, through your worship, yes, I can point it out. It's.
I can. It's, can you see my mouse? It's would be in this area back over here, closer to Ross Creek.
Okay.
That'd be Rogers. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, Counselor Macon?
No.
You're good. Counselor Blizzard?
Hi. Thanks for the presentation. This isn't new. I know at the beginning you kind of went, you know, recent years. This probably goes back to, and I'm going to say probably even the mall pulled away business from the original 101st, 100 Ave. And now then Walmart came in, which would have been about 20 years ago. So how much have we spent? Any idea over the years? And this might go back to some of the other managers. But since that time, like, how much money have we given out in incentives to develop, and have they worked?
So through your worship to Counselor Blizzard, through these two programs, we have not given out any funds. But I can let somebody else speak to previous.
Through your worship to Counselor Blizzard, I don't, I'm not familiar with any incentive programs that were created for increasing residential development or mixed use. We do have the annual incentive program, which is used for things like storefronts, but not necessarily dedicated to increasing density.
Okay. Thank you.
In addition, through your worship to Counselor Blizzard, we do have those five business development incentives. They're not specifically for downtown. They're for general businesses that are in the area. And then we have the downtown action plan, which is where some of the funding has come from to do things like the murals, the parklets, certain signage, some marketing things along those lines.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Abatoye?
Thank you for your presentation. It was really exciting to see people applying for this program. I know there's been no uptake as yet, but, you know, it's really exciting to see it go forward because I think sometimes it's necessary for municipalities to incentivize, you know, these types of developments. And I think it's really nice to see that people are, you know, applying. And even more exciting to see that one person already got permits. So great. My question is more, is very data-centric. And it's because of the comments that's been, that was about, you know, the population of four to 50 residents typically wouldn't support less than 30% of the current commercial space. And my question is, what is the current population of the downtown area? And what capacity do we need to be able to support at least 80% of the current commercial space in the downtown area? Do you have that data?
Through your worship to Counselor Abatoye, I do not have the data for the amount of current residential population. I believe in the report, actually, I might have pulled it. And I can, I can take a look for you. In looking at the 2023 MDP implementation, it identified that 93 new units have been added to the downtown since the MDP was adopted. So it looks like in the downtown core, we're currently looking at, if I'm reading this correctly, 223 in the downtown core, 1,042 in the downtown fringe, and about 218 in the 99th Avenue corridor.
Those are new, those are new additions, right? So the current vacancy rate is 15%, am I correct?
The vacancy?
The vacancy rate is 15%, okay. Just my final question, and just because this, I wasn't really clear what this meant, and I'm just going to read it. So it says, "Successful grant applications draw from this fund." This is under financial implication. And the tax uplift from the project is used to replenish the fund back to its optimal balance so it can be assessed by future applicants. So that's, that comment kind of answered my question because I'm thinking if three to five of these businesses got approved, that money's going to be depleted. So how are we going to, how are we going to replenish that? So how are we going to, how are we going to replenish that bucket? So I feel this comment explains it, but I don't really understand what that means. So can you explain that?
Through your worship to Counselor Abatoye, my understanding is that the tax uplift from the increased property taxes would be going towards helping to regenerate this fund, but I can ask people behind me?
Through your worship, that is correct. Any uplift from a development project would go back into the fund until it gets back to 500.
In that area, not specifically on the buildings, the new buildings, right? What in that area is that, is that what that means?
No, just the new buildings that would be approved under this project.
But they're getting a tax exempt exemption. So where, where's that money going to come from?
Through your worship, the tax exemption only applies to the Brownfield program?
Okay, so this will only apply to the downtown one. Okay. Thank you.
Tax exemption. Okay.
Counselor Kelly?
Thank you. I'm going to start with my easy question first.
Much appreciated.
You indicated that one project had received development permit status, I think is what you said. Is it, if you can, share a little more detail, is it, I guess, the apartments? And if it is, or even if it isn't, doesn't matter, how many units does that project bring to the downtown core?
Through your worship to Counselor Kelly, that would be information that I'd like to provide at a, at a later date.
Okay. Counselor Burgett's line of questioning twigged my imagination a little bit. Lots of times when we sit up here, we get hung up on the cost and we don't talk much about the benefit. And in all of this, and in the first go around, and in the go around before that, I don't remember any analysis of the benefits. So, so would it be possible for administration, and this is estimating only, and maybe estimate on level one, level two, or level three of increased development in the area for Brownfield? In other words, if we could get to where the optimal level would be for development, be it Greenfield or Brownfield or a combination of the both, what would be the financial benefit to the city on an annual basis? And it's a gross estimate, I understand that, but it helps put it in perspective. What would be the social benefits? What would be the spin-off benefits? I.e., presumably they'd be more commercial downtown, which would have an impact again on, on the financial well-being of the city and, and some social benefits as well. Would it be possible to do something like that for the future?
Through your worship to Counselor Kelly, I think that metrics are always an important thing for us to be considering and looking at when we're looking at some of these programs. And I know that in economic development, we're working towards determining what metrics are the most useful for showing some of the progress or the impact of some of these, these programs. So I would say that, you know, in our reports for both the Municipal Development Plan and the Downtown Action Plan, they both state that to support the businesses in our downtown, we need that increased residential base so that people are populating or are visiting or, you know, being patrons of these businesses. And that the businesses in the downtown would then be the most accessible for them. And increasing the different types of, of housing is beneficial to a community. We've seen a number of those reports. But when it comes to the actual metrics and measuring the financial impact of, of those, of these programs is something that we can look into determining how we can better present that information to council.
I think that would prove valuable. It, it helps maybe change the focus a little bit of the discussion. So, yeah, and this is down the road, obviously. So I look forward to the next report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any additional questions? Not seeing any. Thank you very much. And we look forward to the announcement of which project it is that's on there. I think that's going to be very exciting, so.
I apologize. I just didn't want to speak out of turn on that.
I, I understand. It's not your news. Maybe it's Ms. Smith's news. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so we will move right along to Recreation Facilities Report for Collection of Customer Demographic Data. Welcome, Brad Babiac.
Good afternoon, your worship and council. As you mentioned, I'm Brad Babiac, the City's Director of Culture and Recreation. I'm joined in the back today by Lindsay Porters, our Supervisor of the Dow Centennial Center, Arenas and Torres Field, and Kayla Dow, our Supervisor of Harbor Pool. The purpose of this presentation today is to provide the committee of the whole with an overview of the work administration conducted to look at the collection of customer data that we collect when using recreation facilities beyond what is captured as part of our normal business of having people in registered programs or purchasing memberships or passes. In terms of the background, this notice of motion was passed on November 8th, 2022. And the work we were tasked with was to outline options and implications for the collections of more detailed customer demographics at city recreation facilities. So the scope of that work was to define the different levels of data, the option, different level of data collection options, and the associated benefits with those options. Also to look at the potential costs and related operational impacts related to those potential options, as well as the potential associated customer service and legal or logistical implications. So it's important just to keep in mind in terms of how we deliver recreation, it's primarily delivered through, in terms of indoor recreation facilities, three primary ways. Spontaneous use, which is our memberships, passes, drop-in programs, our registered programs, so things like swim lessons, fitness classes, summer camps, and then our rentals. So the rentals of our arena or pool for different activities. In terms of what that looks like, in terms of spontaneous use, Dow Centennial Center has approximately 50% of its spontaneous use is through daily admissions. So one-time purchases rather through, rather than through a membership or a pass. That means the other 85% is captured through those memberships and passes. The Down, the Down Centennial Center has about 110 hours of spontaneous use per week. And at the Harbor Pool, approximately 70% of the visitation for spontaneous use is daily admissions and 30% is memberships and passes. And there's approximately 35 to 45 hours of spontaneous use per week, with the 35 being in the summer when there's more programs going on. Currently, the demographic information we collect is limited to memberships, passes, and registered programs. So we don't collect any individual information from basically daily admissions. They simply purchase the service and come in without providing any information to us. For those that are in our, who purchase memberships or passes or participate in our registered programs, they give the typical contact information of a name, address, as well as a date of birth, which is optional for adults. And it's optional for adults because that's our highest charge for admission. So there's no benefit to, that is achieved through that, like, but if you're a youth, you get a discounted cost, or if you're a senior, you get a discounted cost. So that's why there's the differential and why we require information around date of birth for different aged user groups. And the other piece of information we collect is whether or not people are residents or non-residents to the city. So this user data is limited to city-owned and operated facilities. So any city-owned facilities that are operated by our partners, like the gymnastics facilities or curling, obviously, we do not collect this information. It's not part of our system. So that's just one note I wanted to, to raise in terms of the discussion of the breadth of information we have available to us. In terms of the analysis of the different data collection options that had, that we could look at, what we found is the client profiles tend to have significant, unique individual data collected to inform our typical business practices, such as amenity utilization. So, you know, are people using our drop-in programs or fitness center, those types of things? As well, but the biggest gap is really in those non-members or non-pass users or in our rentals. So I think the big thing just to keep in mind is for rentals, that means we could have someone who's rented out a sheet of ice and have 25 to 50 users there. But we don't actually have even guaranteed information on the number participating there or, and by extension, any individual identifiers for them. So that's why it's such a significant gap. The other significant thing we came across through this work is considering when we are going to ask for data, keeping in mind that a large number of our users are youth or children in youth. The reason that is substantial is because there are some guidelines from privacy offices about how you need to have special consideration with minors in terms of asking further information. And to boil it down, it essentially comes back to this, given kind of the difficulties that even adults can have in understanding how their personal information is used in this complex environment, how realistic is it for a child to understand that as well? And so that's why it's just something to keep in mind if we were going to ask children specifically, what we might, whether we would do that directly or through their parent or guardian. So it's not to say it can't be done. It just means we want to give special consideration to it. The additional work done was reviewing the current demographic information that we currently collect through our registrations and memberships, as well as the learnings from the pilot project that was conducted over the summer to see how we might be able to collect unique user information at the Harbor Pool and Dow Centennial Center. There is also reached, research done as part of the Indoor Recreation Facility Program review that's currently being done and looking at the types of information we collected there and how that might be considered as well. In addition, administration reached out to other recreation departments and other municipalities, as well as some research, recreation and research consultants to see about how broadly this practice might be, or if there is others who were doing it or considering it, and what potential benefits they saw from it. At this time, it was not seen to be a common practice. And then finally, we worked, or we had discussions with legislative services in terms of soliciting feedback about how, what, how we might create these approaches and different options, as well as the associated cost and impacts that would come from this work. So that resulted in us developing three options to be considered. The first is to register all recreation facility users in our Intelli, or Intelli Management System to identify all unique visitors to our city-operated facilities. One of the small revisions we look at there is potentially adding the data or requiring the date of birth field to at least be mandatory in terms of an age category. So not asking for a specific birth date, but at least a range of what their age might be, such as 18 to 24, 25 to 34, which is typical with census-related data and stuff in terms of how you would break down age groups. The other thing would be, so this would give all city-operated indoor recreation facilities spontaneous use and rental position, rental participation data potentially, as well as our existing members and user passes and registered programs. The benefits of this would be, we'd have a date, a set of information on repeat and unique visits that could help inform our marketing efforts, as well as potentially future facility planning. In addition, I'm sorry, we're on this page. And the focus here would be really in terms of how we want to execute it, is focusing on encouraging online registration into basically getting registered into the system before they visit the facility. That way, when they visit it, it would be a more seamless process. We'd also want to work with our user groups to see about having them share their registration numbers. So again, this would mean that people wouldn't have to share information at the facility, but we'd still be able to identify the number of users and our rentals, as well as potentially unique identifiers. So even though our attempt would be to push this to online, to minimize the facility piece, we wanted to look at some scenarios where if that wasn't successful, how might we go about supporting the uptick in information and data collection that we wanted without impacting customer experience too much? So part of that could be to look at some kind of funding to support additional staff for a transition period, potentially up to three months, as people get used to coming into the facility if they hadn't registered online, doing it in person and having a staff who could then work with them off to the side, rather than delay everyone else trying to enter the system. It would also be for our bookings staff, our bookings staff, potentially work with our rental groups to help them understand the requirements when they're calling and trying to book time online, that they understand what the requirements are there. And so we would anticipate there'd be some additional call volumes to try and work through that process. And in addition, we would also need some additional staff to do the actual data administration cleanup. We'd have a massive amount of new data coming into the system and we'd want to ensure we managed it properly and had it set up for, to ensure successful analysis later on. So while we envisioned a shorter-term pilot in terms of in-person staffing, we do think it could take up a year to kind of fully transition everything to the new process, because we have different user groups coming at different points of the season. So we have spring ice users who aren't necessarily the users in the fall. We have dry pad users who are only coming in the summer. So there's a bit of a different schedule there in terms of the users. The section option is, would be limited to just registering individual recreation facility users for our city-operated facilities like the Harbor Pool and Dow Centennial Center. And we would exclude rentals from this option, but we'd still look to potentially add some kind of age category for date of birth. So this would give us spontaneous use in addition to our existing memberships and pass use. So it would give us a broader data set. And again, we'd want to action it through encouraging people to register online before coming into the facility, but recognizing that may not be successful, having some kind of plan in terms of supporting it as people came in. As, at least as a potential option. And finally, the third option would be to add recreation facilities, add a recreation facility use question to the municipal census. This would potentially allow us to identify all unique visitors to the city-owned recreation facilities that were residents, as well as being able to understand the types of usage they were undertaking. So spontaneous registered programs or rentals. It would also potentially allow to expand it from indoor recreation to even to look at our outdoor recreation if we wanted to examine our usage there. Again, an area we don't typically collect data. And then in addition, the one area that we definitely don't have any information on is in terms of spectators. So a question could be related to that, to fully understand who uses our facilities and for what purposes, and how many unique visits we get to those, in addition to our typical data that we would have. The one, so there is no real cost associated with this option, as most of it can be absorbed within internally with our users. The one thing I would note on this one is even though there is no cost and it keeps people from having to register in the facilities, it does transfer potentially some burden to the residents completing the census based on the number of facilities they use in the city. So the more use they have, the more questions it would necessarily, they might have to answer on the census to provide us that information. So there is still a bit of a, an impact to users. Just it won't be at the facility. It would be at their home when they do the census every year or so. So in terms of next steps, basically admin would take away any questions or feedback from council and we could revise the options or report accordingly. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. We'll open this up to questions. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Brad. I think I was the one that put the motion forward. In fact, I'm confident that I was. It wasn't quite what I thought maybe we would get back, and I don't mean that negatively. I probably wasn't clear in my expectations either. So let me, first of all, I think this is important. I think this is a large project. You've alluded to that. So I strongly suggest we would tackle it. So I strongly suggest we would tackle it in bite-sized portions. Not citywide, absolutely not. Let's let's focus on the pool. Why the pool? I'm not picking on the pool, but the pool is front and center in our budget discussions and council discussions. And potentially our next large investment, so let's try to figure that out. And with that in mind, the unique users isn't just, we have two thousand unique users in the fort. That's not the data I was envisioning we would have. Um, and I'm going to to highlight that, reference you back to the indoor rec study that was presented to council just a few months ago. And that study, I think, pointed out hugely the issue that we have with some of our indoor facilities. It's the concentration of use. And I'm not trying to suggest that that study, that the data generated from that study is the is is. To be relied on, but let's go through the numbers with the pool. According to that study, six percent of the residents of Fort Saskatchewan visited the pool. Somewhere, and I'm trusting my memory on this number, about a hundred and thirty-five thousand visits. We know the pool only got a hundred and five thousand, but the study clearly said a hundred and thirty-five. If we assume the study is wrong by fifty percent. Then somewhere around seventy thousand visits of the hundred and five are consumed by six percent of the residents. And I honestly believe that that concentration of use drives or would help drive investment decisions in the community. And that's the focus I was coming from and have come from all along. The survey that was conducted as part of that research project drove it home in spades. So it's not, we have four thousand residents actually using the pool. I want to know if there's two thousand of those using the pool eighty percent of the use. Cause that changes the investment decision in my opinion. And I'm not worried about the rentals. For ice time or anything else at this juncture. Let's focus on one thing, the big investment decision that we have in front of us. I think also at the pool, and correct me if I'm wrong, that when you report, when administration reports that. That swimming lessons are tagged in as rental. Am I right on that?
Uh, through your worship, I believe you know um swim lessons should be tagged in as registered programs.
Uh, I stand to be corrected, but I thought going through the priorities, priority based budget stuff that that that's. But this is recollection. I don't need a response, Brad. Just bear that in mind. So.
Esther Fleming.
I was just gonna say it's possible we did group them together in terms of a program in the PBB, but in terms of. Data collection like this, they would be pretty s- pretty distinct uh entities.
And that's entirely possible to try. I don't, I it's, I'm working off the data I have. So, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, as an accountant, imagine, Brad, it's your money on the line. What would you as the investor want to know to make the decision? And Mayor Catcher, that's the last comment. Thank you.
And I think we'll just leave that. Okay? It's a rhetorical question. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure you didn't jump in there. Okay, I'll go next. So um, I think the information is interesting. Um, I'm not sure I would see value in adding any money to do further data collection to that extent and. And I know our provincial government continues to say to uh everybody, we need to reduce red tape. And when I look at the Dow Center. And I know Councilor Kelly said just take a bite off off one at a time, but when you look at, you know, the Dow Center, you've got trade shows, vendors. Dance uh recitals going on constantly, you know, the football lacrosse or not football in the Dow Center, but. The programs that go on, you know, all throughout the Dow. Um, you know, I just have to really question the real value of that. And I mean, for even Harbor Pool, you get birthdays that come in and and do a birthday party. You've got the Piranha Swim Team. Um, I think if you start making, if if the city starts making this too complex. People just say, yeah, I'm good. I I don't need to book that facility. Um, or I don't need to go there. So and and I'm trying not to get in debate on this, but. I just feel the more red tape that you add to something, the more people may shy away from it and. And and then you may get the question, you know, why are you doing these ones when you're not doing pickleball and you're not doing? You know, all of these other ones, there's so many. So um, I, for me, I'm questioning the value. You know, always open to influence, but just questioning the value, but it's interesting information. So I'll just leave my comments with that. Okay, thank you. Counselor Abatoye.
Thank you, Brad, for your presentation. I think data is very important as we go ahead and make decisions. And also thank you for doing the pilots. Um, I'm just curious, what was the feedback you got from residents while you were conducting this pilot?
Uh, through your worship, the counselor, um. Uh, I think as the report states, I think we had just slightly over a hundred people who just refused to provide the information. So obviously they weren't receptive to it. There were some backlogs, so there was some questions about could it, why was it happy and could we go forward? And I would just state this is we didn't put any additional supports in, so we just ran it as is, and that's one of the reasons we had some of those things. And with the pool, typically what happens in a a public swim like that, you have up to three hundred people trying to get in the pool all at once, so you have a very. Dedicated time, so it creates more of a barrier. Whereas something like the DCC, if you're going to use the fitness center, whatever, you don't have that same kind of issue. So, yeah, I wouldn't say it was overly, wrongly positive. But again, part of it is just how we did the the pilot, I think, and so there's some things we learned from that definitely if we ever made changes going forward.
Thank you. Um, just to your reports, um, on the findings over the three months showed. Um, the very last point is says in total, data was collected from nine hundred and sixty-six visits. Of which five sixty-two were unique visitors. So what that tells me is that eh over three months, we had people come just once over three months. Because I would expect that, you know, we have the same people coming a few times, but it seems like majority of the people, the unique visitors. Who came in for spontaneous visits just showed up once over that three month period. So. Do you have a comment? Cause I I I kind of question that's information.
Uh, through your worship, the counselor twice. So I think that's part of the nature of. Maybe potentially a couple of things. One, the spontaneous use itself, so that means people are. That they're paying for a spontaneous use opportunity, means they don't have a membership or a pass, so that. Means they may not be frequent users, and so that's why they're not showing up often is because at that point they may look to one of those. A membership or a pass because it's more cost effective than one-offs. Uh, the other is uh a large number of those users, a- as again the report showed. Um, sixteen hundred were minors. So again, they're just kind of coming and doing things more spontaneously. Uh, then maybe again, you'd see at the DCC with the fitness program or using the gym. These are a lot more just your drop-in pool activities. So those could be a couple of things that may have had an impact on that.
Yeah, and it was interesting to see that sixty percent were minors. And just my last question and maybe it come back is, so with option one and option two, is there an increase in the software, in the cost of the software? Or is just all staff in?
Uh, through your worship, yes, I would tell you, no, there's no uh software costs associated with that. It would literally just be the data management side and the the staffing to uh check people in. And again, those were just rest estimates so that we at least had an understanding of what it would look like if we wanted that additional support to minimize. The impact of those using the facility or like coming into the facility.
Alright, okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Noyan. Let's give me a second. There you go.
Yeah, thanks and thanks for the presentation, uh, Brad. I'm I'm kind of looking at this from the perspective of the user, so as they enter our facility. Um, under options one and two, uh, if they're being asked to 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 provide information on their their demographic. And and then further like going on a website or 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 maybe using an app potentially in the future to do this. At a certain point, it becomes a little bit intrusive and and a barrier for users to happily. Access a facility. I I'm just wondering if you have some comments and a thought process on. Uh, usership and like the hurdles they have to go over to to get into a facility. And and how are we kind of kind of finding a middle ground with that under these programs so that we're not deterring people from from coming to our facilities? Say if, you know, ch- children are gonna be uh uh subject to data collection and they don't have an iPhone with them constantly and, you know. Things like that that could arise.
Uh, through your worship, the council knowing it, um. It very, very relevant points in terms of the potential barriers and some of the challenges associated with it. The the one thing to recognize is anyone who is currently a member or purchasing uh passes or anything else. Provides that level of information already. So it is a smaller, well, at the Dow Centennial Center, it's a smaller number of people who are choosing not to do that. Uh, and so they're not providing us any information. They provide us just the payment and there's no personal information captured. Uh, so there is, for those who do uh have the memberships or passes, they do provide us with the information we'd be requesting anyways. But you are right, as a one-off, it is more of a burden than if I'm setting myself up to have easier access over the course of. A month, a year, whatever, for not having, because at that point you walk in, check in, you just go about your business as opposed to having to provide your information. Uh, I'm not, I mean, I think the burden conversation comes down to, I think, what was alluded to earlier. What is the potential benefit of the information and what can we derive from it to makes it beneficial enough to us? To inform decision-making without being too much of a burden to the users, whether that be through the. Um, getting at the facility or even if you went to a census. I think it comes down to the value of the data and what we would ultimately do with it as part of that conversation. But I I don't know what the ultimate answer or balance would be with that.
Yeah, it's it's a tough question to answer finitely, I I suppose. Um, it's it, so in the future, like, are we looking to to get an app specifically for this? So is that that a conversation that that that's happened or?
Uh, through your worship, the counselor, no, not at this point. Again, these these were just us looking at the potential options about how we might go about collecting. Uh, more unique individual data. Uh, there's no plan in place or or strategy at this point, until we. Were clear what the expectations might be in term beyond what we currently have, which is those people. Kind of committing to a program, either registered or a membership. Um, it simplifies the process. It gives us important information. But at this point, there there's nothing we have planned to change.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Makin.
Thanks for your presentation, Brad. Excuse me. Um, so I guess when I was looking at this report, I was a bit surprised by the amount of data collection. That was in it. So it seems like you're trying to register each person so that you have your information in the system. Is that right?
Through your worship, the council making, yes. Anyone who. Uh, registers in one of our paid programs or purchases a membership or purchases a pass, yes, does provide name, contact.
But the spontaneous use collection in this case.
Use collect, data collection.
So when you say like you collected this data over the last three months and there was kind of backlogs, what information were you trying to get while that backlog was happening?
Uh, through your worship, the council making. Thank you for the question. I can clarify that. That one, we did a very stripped down version of simply a name and a postal code. Uh, not wanting to collect as much information as we typically did, but just again to see. Would it give us anything actionable? Or uh to a greater level of detail of what we currently had and just what that process might look like and what was the feedback. So yeah. It was much more limited in scope than what we asked for for our registered programs.
So do you think that the pushback on it came from the name, like if you'd simply just asked for a postal code? Cause really, what's the value in the name? If you had just said postal code?
Uh, through your worship, the counselor making, that would not allow us to have unique visitors.
Okay.
There are multiple people within a postal code, and so to get to the idea of a unique visitor to at least say that. Each person who came was not a repeat, we would need more than just a postal code.
Sure, okay. And I guess like for me, I don't know that. The unique visitor portion is as important to me rather than how many uses are happening, I guess um. So I guess my only other comment would be for making this decision, right, on recreational facilities. I think the important thing to remember is that there's no way for us to determine how the use will increase. When we put these facilities in place, because we can use this data to help inform it. But if you build, like, for example, a pool with a water slide and a lazy river. The amount of people using that pool is going to substantially increase, and there's a lot. Of people who don't use our pool, for example, because of it's inadequate setup, right? And the lack of amenities that it has. So while I think that this information is important and can help us in the decision. There there is things that this data can't do, so that's all my comments for now.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to round two. Counselor Kelly, you're first.
Yes, thank you. Um, Brad, I apologize. I thought my last question was obviously rhetorical. Um, so so I didn't pause to explain. You touched briefly on the benefits of trying to do something like this, because the benefit is not in and of itself to gather the data. The benefit is to make a better investment and management decision. Would that be accurate?
Through your worship, the counselor, Kelly, yes, absolutely.
I agree. I had hoped that maybe as part of the report, we would see some of those benefits described and maybe. The concept of a lazy river, the example of a lazy river was brought up. I I absolutely must address that. Absolutely, that would drive visitors. But if the lazy river under the current funding model is paid for twenty percent by the user and eighty percent by the taxpayer. The question really is, does the community want to pay for a lazy river? For maybe only six percent of the community actually using it four times or five times a week. And that's the data that was brought out in the study, the concentration of use. And until we understand that, we don't know who's using our facilities. It's that simple to me. And and I uh, just one last comment, and I know you know this, but in this day and age. Mega data is everything. We have trillion dollar companies that specialize in gathering the data. So that corporations can buy it for marketing decisions. That's no different in our small microcosm of the world. The data drives everything. And the data has to be gathered efficiently to be worthwhile, and that can only happen with a reasonable electronic approach. And I don't know what that is, Brad. That's what makes your job, I guess, difficult. But 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 it can't be manned and populated by somebody standing at the front counter. That doesn't work. That drives annoyance factor. That drives a whole bunch of things. And and I'll leave it at that, but I reference you back, please. Go back and refresh your memory on a record indoor rec study that council was presented with two times. And look at the concentration of use. Because from a non-user, that concentration of use makes me think that we need to be very, very careful. On what we have for facilities. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Aba- whoops, sorry. Counselor Abatoya, you're next.
Thank you. Um, so just back to the pilots we had, so we collected postal codes. Do we know how many people um came from out of town um that were spontaneous users?
Uh, through your worship, the counselor, Abatoya, uh, we do, but I do not know, right? Uh, we do have in a report. I currently don't have it in front of me. Um, but yeah. I I can say, though, typically within, um, and I can't say this for spontaneous use, but. For other programs, we can see up to twenty percent from out of town for some of our other registered programs. Uh, at the particularly at the Harbor Pool. Um, but I can get that information and share it if you wish.
Thank you. Um, so just to the com- just to make a comment, um, I mean, data is king. I think there's no need to overemphasize that. And I think it's important for us to help make an informed decision, but um. I know that with the pilots, we did postal code and names, and just to counsel making this point about name not really. Um, been valuable. I wonder though if an email address will be better, and I wonder if we um. If there's an opportunity for us to do like email marketing to our residents, you know, instead of like, for example. Um, printing booklets, you know, with the um leisure guide, maybe it's a digital one that will save and cut some costs. Um, for the city. Um, and maybe it's not the staff, maybe it's just an iPad that people can go in there and just. Putting their email address and they're ready, so they just go, maybe two iPads, you know, right in front there. Maybe that's. Putting their email address and they're ready, so they just go maybe two iPads, you know, right in front there. Maybe that's what that looks like. Um but I think it's important for us to know that it's important for us to get data as we go ahead with this Um decision. I know it's gonna it may be a little tedious in the beginning. And it doesn't have to be something that's forever ongoing, but something that could help us to make an informed decision, I think is necessary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I've just got one last one. So I know you're trying to collect all this data on individual, but I know at the Dow Center, at some points in time, they have the counters at the doors and I And I know it's not accurate because some people go in and out and in and out. But doesn't that kind of give you a basis of how many people are going in and out of the building? Because I mean, when you've got uh the number of dancers that are in there, like I see that parking lot full all the time. You know, like, I'm just, I'm just, if you're looking for any kind of just on how many Bodies are in and out of the building with, isn't that just the easiest? You just put a counter on the bottom, you're not invasive to anything?
To your worship. So yes, that is a technology we use and Uh and so it's maybe an overarching clarifying statement is we do collect data in in a couple of different ways. There's the registered piece where we collect individuals or data that would allow us to identify individuals. But we do have the traffic counters uh at the facility, uh because I think that's the other part Um that I only briefly alluded to is We have the specific uses of programs, whether it's a fitness program or swim program, but we also have others who utilize our facility. Particularly, for example, the Dow with students coming in and they may not purchase anything, but they're using that space. And the same thing as you mentioned for dance, like, we don't know every single dancer that comes through there, but we do get some rough estimates from our traffic counters About the amount of people who go through that facility. And we're also able to get the visits, not visitors, uh through our registration and our check in process and stuff. So we do have a a fairly robust amount of data. It's just the level of detail that's needed is really this. I would say the focus of what this conversation, the report was about is not necessarily The overall breadth, but the level of detail that we would look at would be different than what we're currently doing.
Okay, I think. Okay, Councilor Abatoya, one more.
Um, sorry. Um so how about poll approximately seventy per seventy percent is daily admissions. So is that spontaneous um users?
Through your worship to council, I have a toy. Yes, this and I I'll just uh ensure I speak to this accurately. The pilot was only for spontaneous use.
Right.
So anyone else who is in our registered programs or uh had a membership or ever was not part of that pilot. It was only those who didn't have a membership who were coming into the facility.
Right. The reason I'm asking that question is that seventy percent is a huge number, right? For us not have that Information, right? Specifically for Harbor Pool. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. So thank you very much for the presentation. I'm not sure uh what Uh Mr. Fleming is going to make out of that at the end of the day, but we will take a ten minute break. Uh so we will recess for ten minutes. So back about three thirty six. We are in recess. Okay, we will resume the meeting and the next item that we have is twenty twenty four budget update. Shannon Andruco and Jeremy presenting.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Shannon Andruco, Manager, Budget and Financial Planning. Joining me today is Jeremy Eman, Chief Financial Officer. We are here today to provide you with an update of the twenty twenty four operating budget. The purpose of this presentation is to provide you with an overview of the key priorities being Considered in the developing of the proposed twenty twenty four operating budget. Feedback from council is important and it helps shape the proposed budget presented in fall. We want to ensure that the budget reflects the needs of our community. Therefore, we're seeking your advance feedback on the priorities presented today. In addition to sharing the key priorities, I will provide an overview of the upcoming budget process timeline. The work on the twenty twenty four budget is currently in progress with various teams and departments involved in the process. One of the initial steps taken was to identify key priorities for the budget, considering the needs and goals of the city. Preliminary preliminary cost estimates and additional revenue projections accompanied these priorities. As part of the budget development process, Departments are actively exploring ways to optimize resource allocations by reviewing existing services, exploring opportunities for efficiency and improvements And cost recovery initiatives and potential partnerships. In addition, most of the city departments are reviewing and updating the procedures for The user fees and charges to align with the recently approved user fees and charges policy update. Given the significant numbers of fees and the amount of work involved, The recreation culture, or sorry, culture and recreation services and the utilities department review process will extend beyond the twenty twenty four budget And is expected to be completed in preparation for the twenty twenty five budget process. Departments have identified several key priorities for consideration for the twenty twenty four budget. The city's leadership team is in early stages of reviewing these priorities and assessing how they align with the city's budget and Or sorry, with the budget and the city's strategic objectives. Here's some examples of the budget parties. One priority is to address the cost of living adjustment for the Canadian Union Public Employees or QP In accordance with the agreement. In addition to QP, a cost of living increase recommendation is being determined for administration. The current salary mitigation calculation within the it will be reviewed for twenty twenty four, considering the salary and wage deficit incurred in twenty twenty two And the projected deficit for twenty twenty three. It is projected that six to eight new positions across multiple departments will be included in the budgets, such as roads, parks, Safety codes, internal support role roles. It is important to note that these are in addition to the new positions Recently approved uh for fire services. The budget will also encompass several major plans and studies, such as open space master plan, industrial area structure plan update, Stormwater master plan, highway twenty one fifteen urban design and Ross Creek Basin, among others noted in the report. Two debentures are scheduled to retire in twenty twenty three. One for the Dow Centennial Center and the other for sewer services reline. It is recommended that the sewer services reline debenture be allocated to the utility infrastructure and equipment reserve For future utility lifecycle replacements. Similary to previous budgets, the twenty twenty four budget will include The remaining twenty five percent for new positions approved in twenty twenty three. Accounting for the operating impacts associated with the approved twenty twenty three capital project project capital projects. And aim to increase the annual capital funding by reducing the city's reliance on major capital grants Such as MSI or the LGFF Local Government Physical Framework and the Cana- Cana- Sorry, Canada Community Building Fund, CCBF. Revenue projections are still being assessed. The projected tax revenue resulting from assessment growth is currently being determined by the assessors. Investment income will also be reviewed, considering market conditions and the twenty twenty three approval of the increased funds committed to the JRC modernization project. Based on the identified budget priorities and early projections indicates a need for A property tax revenue increase of approximately two point six million and approximately one point eight million in one time initiatives. However, significant refinement work will still occur before budget deliberations in the fall. Moving on to the twenty twenty four budget timeline, June twenty seventh, the proposed ten year Twenty twenty four, twenty thirty three capital plan update will be presented where council can discuss the capital plan. August twenty second, there will be a community grants update Uh providing information on status and allocation of the community grants. October sixteenth and the twentieth, capital budget presentations will take pay place Where the capital plan and departments with capital projects will make presentations to council. November fifteenth, twentieth, twenty third and thirtieth, operating budget presentations and deliberations will occur. Departments will present their proposed operating budgets and council will have the opportunity to discuss and deliberate. December twelve is the final step is where the twenty twenty four operating. December 12th is the final step is where the 2024 operating and capital budgets are approved. It is important to note that during these meetings stakeholders have the opportunity to provide feedback to council. In addition, members of the public can register in advance to council at other council meetings not identified, allowing for public engagement and input into the budget process. As for the next steps in the development of the 2024 budget, administration will take back and review your feedback provided today. This feedback will be incorporated into the ongoing development of the budget, ensuring that it aligns with the established timelines. And finally, the 2024-2033 capital plan update will be presented at the June 27th regular council meeting. This concludes my presentation and Jeremy and I will be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, I'm sure, thank you very much. I'm sure there will be lots of questions. Counselor Neuen.
Yeah, thanks for being here this afternoon for the presentation. Looking forward to see the budget come together for this year. First question just has to do with WCB premiums increasing. Have that been due to claims within the city? Or that is just an overarching increase due to insurance premiums going up, call it inflationary measures or whatever the case? It's on page three of the report.
Um. No, oh, now I am. I'm, I don't think I can quite answer that question for you. All's I know is is includes, it is due to some high valuing claims due to injuries, so.
Within the WCB organization entity as a whole.
With our WCB entity.
Oh.
With the cities.
Okay, is that right?
Yeah. But our industry rate for municipalities did rise by 12.5%, so that affects the rate.
More significantly than anything else. Okay, thanks. That's, that's all for now.
Okay, thank you. So I'm next in the speaking order. So the question that I have is you're saying 2.6 million. So remind us again how many hundred thousand make up 1%?
To Madam Chair, so approximately for 2024, we'd be looking at about 550,000 roughly per 1%.
So you're saying one, two, three, four, little over 4% you're sitting at right now is where administration's at?
That would be correct, yeah. Again, that's an estimate and very preliminary at this point.
And does that take into account any new assessment?
Right now, we don't have a growth number. Right now, we have a very little growth. What we'll know, we'll know more after the assessors are done their annual assessment. So that usually happens now and in July. So hopefully towards the end of summer, we'll have more information.
Okay, and then last question that I have. So we continue to talk about retired debentures being recycled into something else. I thought council had kind of made an indication that we didn't want that. So I don't know. I guess that's a conversation that'll have to be had, but that's my recollection. Mr. Fleming, do you recall that?
That is correct on the DCC debenture and we wrote that into our policy. That we would take it off and give it, like, put it back to.
Okay, but I'm talking about debentures in general.
Yes, to your worship, you're correct. We're not suggesting for the DCC debenture that there's a, it's just retired. There's no repurposing of it. For the utility, because of the state of the utility reserve, we are recommending increased funding for the utility reserve contribution. So whether you look at that as a repurposing or just simply a recommendation for a new fund, that's probably a more accurate way to look at it.
Yeah, and I think they have to, my own opinion, they have to be retired and if you need some bump, but I don't think it sets good precedence if we just automatically turn them over, so.
Deventures get retired. That just, that happens automatically. Whether or not we decide to spend money on something else is a completely separate decision.
Except we're, I'm sorry, council, except at that point in time, we are re-discussing them and, and making decisions on them. I'll leave it with that. Okay, thank you. Counselor Makin.
I was enthralled with what you were saying and now I'm trying to remember my question. Okay, yes, thank you. So on these items that you list as key priorities, and I don't need this information right now, but could you, would it be possible at some point in the next week or so to send us what you believe each one of these things impact is? Like, if you're saying that it's going to be 2.6 million-ish, what do you believe the union contract negotiations, would you believe the COLA? Just so we kind of have an idea where the majority of that is coming from? Is that possible?
It's possible work, but I think the turnaround time is too aggressive because we're still going through that information. LT is still working through that information and making decisions.
I guess then I would challenge to say, like, then how did you come up with the 2.6 million if you don't have a breakdown?
So we do, we asked all the departments to provide us with their priorities for the departments. We costed those and brought them to LT and this is the outcome of that first exercise. Now the next exercise is for, for LT to go through that, make some decisions, work with the departments, and try to refine some of this information.
Okay, I don't, yeah, I guess I'll just leave it then.
Thank you. Counselor Kelly.
Just for my own clarification, the 2.6 million that was referenced, that does not include the plus 1 million that was allocated at last meeting for the fire hall changes. Is that correct?
There is, that we do have some costs in the preliminary. We just have to go through it and make sure that it aligns with what was approved the last, last meeting.
Because when I read it, I'm thinking it's not 2.6, but 3.9 or something like that.
There is stuff for fire in there.
Okay, thank you. So we'll get more clarity going forward on that. Counselor Neuen already referenced the, the WCB. I just think they, I just refer you to on the, the, your page two, I think, page three. Does it, there's, there's a statement there that I actually circled that says, "For an increase in 2023 as a result of an estimated payroll cost rise of 18.9%." That caught my attention because I'm fairly certain that that's not the case.
I could get clarification on that. From our people services department.
Of more importance, in my mind at least, on the bottom of the second page, the bullet point referencing the MSI and local government fiscal framework funding. Additionally, there will be an increase in annual capital funding aimed at reducing reliance. It's not aimed at making up for a shortfall in those funds, but reducing a lot reliance. What exactly does that mean?
So currently in our budget, we have, I think we've tackled the neighborhood rehab in the past few years where we've take, we've reduced reliance off the grants for our annual program. And now we're moving into the local road rehab, or I've got them mixed up. One of them's done and one we're going to be working on now. But having them solely relied on grant revenue is kind of a risk if the province then decides that they're going to reduce our grant funding, then we'd have to reduce our programs and then significantly increase the property taxes.
Mr. Fleming, do you want to further anything?
I, I think that was accurate. We're just trying to not rely on provincial funding for those core programs, road rehab and neighborhood rehab.
But we're still getting the funding.
Yeah.
So it sounds to me as a layperson that we're double dipping on now and we're getting the funding, but we're pretending we're not and we're increasing our budget accordingly.
I think what we would look at as an overall strategy is to have those core ongoing programs funded through property taxes. And then your MSI or whatever we're calling it now, LGFF funding would be used for capital items that are more one-time in nature, things that you don't need to do on an annual basis. And those things come around, it, it could be the river road repairs or this covert or, you know, some unexpected road repair or facility that we have to construct, things like that.
Mary Katra, I'm going to sit on that for a second. Thank you.
We would put you down for round two, which we are going on to right now. Counselor Neuen, you're first.
Yeah, this might be a question for the city managers, just in regards of policy for retiring debentures. Because my question arises from a discussion that's already been had. When we saw the Dow debenture not being taken off this year, like the, as the policy itself has been revised since we had that discussion? Okay, so that wasn't effective as per that decision or prior to that decision. Okay, good enough. I see nodding up head, so that's answers my question. And then my other question, let me just scroll. Is, it was, I can't find it here right now. It's in regards to the payroll deficit. I think it was around $300,000 last year. And it's a 2022, 292,000 wages and salary deficit. Was that incurred due to new positions that came to council or is that, like, obviously it wasn't forecasted for, for 2022 budget? Yeah, can you just refresh me where kind of.
More information will be brought next meeting through the T1 report and Clayton Northy will be able to provide more information on that.
Okay, that, that's fine. I can wait till then.
Yeah, just to speak to that very quickly. So the actual deficit, we actually had a surplus. We were under budget in wages for the end of 2022. What brought us to that deficit position was the salary mitigation adjustment. And so the point that we're making in this report today is that we want to review that adjustment. It may need a reduction down to prevent that. It's, it's an estimate of vacancies within the budget. We don't particularly budget for vacancies, but we have this adjustment to account for that. And we need to review that amount just to make sure that it's still relevant and accurate.
Okay, I see. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you. Counselor Kelly, did you have anything further? Go ahead.
So Troy, back to the line of questioning from just a minute ago. The MSI funding, or whatever it's called today, doesn't matter, let's call it MSI. The provincial funding, we're pulling it out of things like road rehab, but allocating it someplace else in the budget. We're not really reducing our reliance on it because we're spending it elsewhere in the budget.
I would say, yeah, that's correct. It'll, it'll get spent. My recommendation to council is to spend the money, but not to embed it within programs that have, that are so important to the city's future sustainability and that are, that we do on an annual basis. So the, the most recent example is that we didn't have to use any debenture funding for the JRC. I believe a large chunk of that was MSI funded along with, I think we used some reserve funding. So it's that type of project that we can, we would recommend using the MSI on. It's not something that's annual, but some, but projects that are more one-time in nature.
Okay, thank you. That helps my understanding a whole bunch, that one example. Thank you.
Okay, that looks like all of the questions, so thank you very much. I think you're going to have a fun time working on this and we're going to have fun time quizzing you on it. So thank you very much. Okay. Counselor inquiries to administration. And I do have one and I wish Brad Babiak had have stayed. Sports fields, so the ball diamonds, who updates, I guess, the city webpage? Or who updates when the diamonds are closed and then reopened? Do we, who is that? Is that communications or?
Through you. It's, it's, it would be somebody through recreation via communications.
Okay, so I guess the question that I have is, is it possible to have it updated on a daily basis? Because I've been told from users that it's updated only every two or three days and some of them are getting in trouble because the sun is shining, the diamond is dry and the, the webpage says it's, they're, they're closed. And then they go out and say, well, we're, we're going to do it because, you know, it has to be updated in two days. So is that a possibility to, to ensure that the information is daily?
Through your worship, I think it is. I thought we had started using a mapping tool to help us with that. But let me, let me go back and just ask these questions and clarify what our process is and if we've been meeting our service level, so to speak.
Because what I heard from MSA is that, that it's not. So that's why I said I would ask the question in public.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of administration? Not seeing any. We have no closed session today. Turn my page over and that will take us to, I have to look at the time, 3:59 and we stand adjourned. All right, thank you.